Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
What's that weird light in everybody's house?
I think last night was a new record. Yay us.
What's the prize?
Yeah, I tried to go back and look at the video and I saw five hours.
As Don Tolloman texted me, he said, if that had been a plane ride, we would have landed in Los Angeles.
He called me asking where his medal was. I'm just texting Tony. He's the only one that said he could come that isn't here yet. We do have a quorum, so we could technically start. Wait one more minute and then I'll do the speech.
Did anyone get up for the clips today?
No, I didn't make it up. Did you see it?
I did not see it, but I got a, uh, one of my neighbors took an incredible photo down at Kingston Point. I mean, it was like really surreal looking.
Yeah, I saw some pictures. I kind of figured the finance committee wouldn't make it up that early.
Not after last night.
I was totally planning to until we hit midnight.
If we had one more subject, if we had one more subject, I think we would have been up until 5:30. So we gotta plan it better next time.
All right. Well, I'm going to start the speech so we can get going. Hopefully, Tony, if you join us, I haven't heard back, but we do have a quorum. So I'm just gonna start up. Looks like we're all set. All right. Thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at a special Common Council meeting. Today is Thursday, June 10. My name is Andrea Shaw. Now, before we begin, we'd like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate the system as efficiently, efficiently, and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and press remain muted and off camera for the length of the meeting. As organizer, Elisa Tinti reserves the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. The council member staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. I will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website. As Elisa Tinti is serving as the organizer for tonight's meeting, she reserves the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. At tonight's meeting, we have city staff, Corporation Council, Kevin Bryant, and City Clerk, Elisa Tinti. Thank you for your patience and on behalf of the Common Council, we wish you all good health. I will now call this meeting to order at 6:36 PM on June 10, 2021. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you. You may be seated. May I please have roll call?
Alderman Ventor Morrell.
Here.
Alderman Coop.
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress.
President.
Alderman Worthington.
Here.
Alderman Tolloman.
Excused.
Alderman Davis.
Excused.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Here.
Alderman Shabbat.
Yeah.
Alderman Hirsch.
Excused. We do have a quorum, even though we're missing some, some council members. We're gonna move to the order of business tonight because we did not have anybody signing up for public speaking. We are here to discuss resolution number 115. So can I have that read, please?
Resolution 115 of 2021, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the request by IT for a transfer of funds in the amount of $90,000 for audio visual equipment for live streaming and remote meeting capabilities.
On the question? Alderman, Renée Scott Childress.
Thank you, President Shaw. I see several reasons for supporting this resolution. The first one has to do with democracy. We have discovered through the COVID crisis that there's more than one way to do community. We can do it in person as we've done for many, many years, but we've also discovered that it's completely viable to do it virtually and that many people experience this in a way that they have never experienced it before. We've seen, according to Clerk Tinti, a rise in the number of people who've been participating. We've seen some meetings with many more people than we normally would have. And so the ability to have hybrid meetings where we can have people in person and with us virtually, I think is crucial to our mission as representatives of our community at large. Another crucial reason that I see for supporting this resolution has to do with staff. Clerk Tinti has been at every single meeting that we've had virtually. That's a huge amount of time that she's put into this. It's quite amazing. Speaking of medals, if anybody deserves one, Elisa does. So as she pointed out too, you know, this is going to mean when we have this, when we go back into council chambers, it's going to mean that we have to have somebody there. If we have the complicated equipment that we had before, we're going to have to have another clerk, somebody who can be at every single meeting, not just of the common council, but all of the boards and commissions. And that would represent a huge amount of money that we'd have to spend to hire a clerk to run that older system. The other advantage of the new system that we're looking at is that it is easy to use. The phrase last night was plug and play. This means that the different boards and commissions, all of them will be able to take advantage of this technology. So all of our meetings that take place in City Hall, either in council chambers or in the conference rooms, will be able to be live streamed. This will bring a greater amount of participation and will make our work the populace large. So for these three key reasons, I think it's important to pass this resolution. The first one I mentioned has to do with democracy and creating a wider community of people involved in the process of government. The second has to do with the efficiency of the work and making it easier for staff to produce the live streaming. And the third has to do with the ease of use of the system, meaning that we would be able to have anybody pretty much make this system work unlike the current system, which has been a complete nightmare. So for those reasons, I think this is a great resolution and I applaud Kyle McIntosh for all the work that he's done to look into this and to find the right equipment for us, which will be quite a boon compared to the system that we've got now. Thank you.
Anyone else in the question? Hearing no more debate, I will call for the vote. Doug, I need you on so I could see. Oh, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly. Always my, my last minute guy here. And Steve.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Patrick O'Reilly. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Renée. All what Renée said is absolutely true. I mean, we are evolving here and democracy needs to come along with us and we're going to need this equipment to, 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 to make that happen. More people becoming engaged. Boy, that's great to hear. Um, thank you. I mean, that's what we're, we're all about. We want that. We want more people engaged in government, as many as possible from all different walks of life, right? Problem is, this technology is developing very rapidly also. Almost so rapidly that the stuff we had just 10 years ago, we're throwing it, you know, we're recycling or throwing in the garbage. The stuff, laptops last us, you know, a few years and then they're obsolete. This equipment is probably going to be obsolete within several years. So my concern is that we're spending $30,000 on a wooden cabinet to hold this, to hold this equipment that could be obsolete in just a few years. Or we might need better or new equipment, maybe not, maybe it'll last eight years. But a third of the cost of this resolution is cabinetry. Um, I'm thinking we could probably do something a little cheaper. Maybe put it on a cart, wheel it in and out. I don't know what. Uh, I know they're trying to match the inside of the chambers with the cabinetry to make it look aesthetically correct. And there might be some reasons for that legally. But I mean, if it's not stored in the council chambers, if it's stored in the back room, maybe the one of the back rooms, then, um, you know, the need for that cabinetry wouldn't be necessary. And 30% of the entire cost of this resolution would not be necessary. So I did ask Kyle to look into that. I don't know what he came up with. Obviously, he didn't come up with anything he thought was better, or we wouldn't be here. I haven't, I haven't heard from him. If any of you've heard anything differently on that subject, I'd appreciate hearing about that. So what I'm concerned about is not whether we need it or not. We need it, no doubt. My concern is, uh, you know, how much do we need to spend on it? And, uh, a third of this, a third of the money is not going towards technology. It's going towards cabinetry, which I'm a little concerned that maybe it doesn't need to be. I don't know if anybody can speak on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think Alderman Steve Shabbat had his hand up and then Alderman Jeffrey Ventor Morrell. So Steve.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, a couple of things. I guess these are just, you know, miscellaneous comments, a lot of it we dealt with last night. You know, Kyle did, he said flat out, we could find cheaper alternatives to a lot of this stuff, but you know, the bottom line, there are going to be cheaper alternatives, you know, so what are we going to get with these things? You know, for me, that's just, it comes down to pretty simple. Either one, we want to have virtual meetings and live meetings together or we don't. So, you know, it's pretty simple, you know, in my mind, what the choices are here. You know, we could, you know, we could ask Kyle again, you know, to talk about some cheaper alternatives. It didn't sound like, I think we're still a ways away. So, you know, I'm not sure the time is of the essence here. You know, we could, we could sit down and explore that if everybody, you know, wants to do that, you know, but again, as we said, you know, last night and, you know, a couple of people have already said that, you know, we've, we've moved into a new era of, of our lives here, you know, there's virtual everything now. I've, I've had virtual doctors visits and, you know, people are, you know, there's still going to be a segment of this population that is going, not going to be comfortable coming out and would prefer to sit at home. So, um, again, as Pat says, this is a lot of money and, you know, I, I really, you know, it's a tough decision to spend this kind of money, you know, it is a lot of money, yeah, but, you know, I really think it's a, it's a good idea to move forward with this, you know, I would like to see people have the alternative to, to sit at home and watch a live meeting as opposed to coming in. So, you know, those are just kind of my, my thoughts and also as Elisa said last night, you know, and Renée also said, you know, this is a matter of staffing too. You know, people have been working their heads off to, to keep this thing running. You know, we appreciate this, but, you know, how long can we keep asking one or two people to invest this much time in something? So at some point, you know, we're going to have to decide, we got to bring in some more personnel to, to make this more effective. Um, and, you know, the equipment we use now is just, we can't use it for a chamber event. You know, we need new technology here. This is, I can't even imagine putting something together like this. This is, you know, Kyle's done an outstanding job, you know, to, to have a, you know, a virtual and a live meeting going on and, and a place to size the chambers is, is going to be phenomenal, you know, to pull this off. But, you know, I think Kyle can do it. So I guess it's just, you know, and I'm not going to criticize anybody one way or another. You know, this is strictly a matter of opinion here. So, you know, that's pretty much my comments. I mean, you know, I, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Steve. Alderman Jeffrey Ventor Morrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm in favor of this resolution. I, I think this would bring us up to, up to the, what, what the standard of technology is for every other municipal building, pretty much that I know of anywhere else. I would have been in favor of doing this a year ago or two years ago even. And I'm even more in favor now that we have experienced what it's like to not be able to meet in person. This would just bring us up to the same standard that, for example, a county building already has. And to Alderman O'Reilly's comments about the cabinets, I initially questioned that also. But it was brought to my attention that it has to be done this way because it's a historic building, so nothing can be, can be attached to the wall or drilled into. So if that helps, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rita Worthington.
Thank you, President Shaw. So I'm going to be in favor of this resolution as well. And I understand the learyness about the cost of it. It is expensive, but technology is expensive. And, you know, could we get something less expensive? Probably, but there's an old saying that we get what we pay for. And so, um, you know, with technology moving the way that it does, we need to get the best, you know, and if we are about having community engagement, then we need to invest in that as well. You know, just real short, you know, even because of this, these virtual meetings and because of COVID and, you know, even though we're opening up, a lot of people still don't want to come out. And because they've experienced the virtual world, they see that they still, you know, they can be involved in things without having to physically come out of their house. You know, our church just got a new PA system and, you know, we're doing the virtual meetings and it's because, you know, there's a lot of senior citizens and a lot of elderly that just will not come out of their houses after this long extended stay of being inside. And so we had to make, you know, things available for them or else risk losing them. And we don't want to do that with our community. We don't want to risk that. And if we, you know, anything that we can do to get more engagement from them, I think we should do it. So, you know, I hear you, Pat, when you talk about this cost, but unfortunately, if we wait, it's going to be more expensive. I do know that because technology moves like that. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the question? Patrick O'Reilly.
Like I said, you know, I'm all for it. I'm all for the technology. Um, I'm all for, uh, you know, moving ahead with this. My concern, Rita Jeffrey and Steve, but Jeffrey, thank you for your comments about the cabinetry, is that 30% of this money is not for technology. I would like to see 100% of the money for technology. We're spending 30, 30% of the money on wood, not technology. That's my concern, not whether, uh, we get the technology. I want 30% more. I want 30% better technology. That's what I want. Not wood. All right. That's all I got.
Thanks, Pat. Alderman Renée Scott Childress.
Couple of things relating to cost. Yes, absolutely. I'm not sure where Alderman O'Reilly is getting the 30% figure.
Couple of things relating to cost. Yes, absolutely. I'm not sure where Alderman O'Reilly is getting the 30% figure. I believe it's much lower than that, number one. Number two, it's, I think there's a strong likelihood that we will be reimbursed for these costs from the COVID money that's coming in. Because this is precisely the kind of thing that that money is meant for, helping us to reach out to the community and to create a stronger bond, especially for those folks, our elderly neighbors who are reluctant to come out in a disease environment. And so the cost, I think, is perfectly apt. We can also, I'm sure if we ask Kyle, say, Kyle, you know, wherever you can, please, you know, try to reduce the cost, keep it as low as possible. I mean, I'll be happy to talk to Kyle about that. But, you know, we do have some issues about storing the equipment. You have to have an adequate place to store it. It's expensive stuff. And so, you know, and because we can't just build normal cabinets for these things, I think that it will be adaptable to in the future. I mean, it's not like you're building, you know, a specific cabinet for a specific piece of furniture, but it does have to fit in. And I think it was Alderman Morrell who said, we can't attach the cabinets to the walls. So that creates some, some problems. So I think the cost is actually not that much of a factor, particularly when what we are buying is greater access for the citizens of Kingston to their representatives in government and the governmental process and a greater practice of democracy here in Kingston. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else before I call for the vote? All right, just to say you all are aware, we do still need a majority of the full common council, so that is five votes and there's six of you. So I will call for the vote now. All in favor, can I see thumbs up, please? And opposed, resolution is passed six to zero or six to three, I guess I have to say on the record, right? So the, it passes six to three. All right, that is all that we have on the agenda. Is there anything else that anybody has? Hi, for the record, I would like to say that my meeting was a lot shorter than Rennie's last night.
Let's talk about quality.
Hey, we're getting back to city hall soon. I think that's quality here. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, Elisa and Kevin for making it out on an extra meeting and the six of you for being here. I appreciate it. I'm enjoying the rest of your evening and I will call for a motion to adjourn.
And good night to Janet.
Is there, and Janet too? Yes, we saw Janet. She had a little cameo. Janet, it comes to all the common council meetings as well and does the work. So thank you, Janet, too. Thanks, Rennie. There's a motion to adjourn from Steve and a second from Patrick. All in favor to adjourn? Opposed? All right, everybody have a nice night. The meeting is now adjourned at 6:56 PM. Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everybody.